Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting agenda for Thursday, June 6, 2024. The time is now 7:03. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 7, 2023 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli is absent excused. Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly, Mayor Kelly is absent excused this evening.
Yes, Mayor Kelly cannot be here tonight. He's actually away enjoying his honeymoon. So we extend best wishes to John and his new bride and much success, health, and happiness. So stay tuned, he'll be back next week. Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for May 7, 2024, and May 10, 2024, which was our budget workshop meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it, second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
We don't have any executive minutes, communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, we have two this evening. Holy Family Church has submitted an event application to hold their 32nd Annual Italian Festival from Thursday, September 19 through Sunday, September 22. At 20 Brookline Avenue, they have also requested permission to hold a raffle on Sunday, September 22 during the affirmation event. The mayor's office has also submitted an event application for the Fourth of July Celebration on Thursday, July 4, 2024, on Franklin Avenue between Church Street and Chestnut Street, as well as in the Park Oval. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it, second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a few proclamations. Before we start with that, we did have a third proclamation for tonight, which we will actually postpone until our meeting on the 18th, when Mayor Kelly is here. This particular proclamation relates to acknowledging the 80th anniversary of the D-Day landings on the Normandy coast during World War II. Actually, we're ready to go. There is an elderly veteran who was to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he can't be here. So we want to make sure that we have both parties that are important to this, and the full board is present to do that. So we'll take care of that on June 18. Meredith, is there anything else I need to know about that? All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. The first proclamation tonight will be for the celebrating LGBTQI plus Pride Month. Commissioner Tucci, can you lead us off?
I will begin, thank you. Whereas Township of Nutley is a friendly and welcoming community that celebrates and promotes diversity and inclusion, and whereas the Township of Nutley recognizes the importance of equality and freedom for all of our residents and the progress we have made as a nation in the fight for justice, inclusion, and equity, and whereas the Township of Nutley recognizes that our nation was founded upon the principles that all people are created equal and that everyone has a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the Township of Nutley is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment based on sexual orientation or gender identity, and we reaffirm our commitment to do more to support LGBTQI plus rights in our town.
Whereas the Township of Nutley is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which make us... I apologize. My daughter. Excuse me, which make us all, make up our vibrant character, and whereas the Township of Nutley recognizes the importance and contributions of members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex community, and whereas the Township of Nutley acknowledges that members of this community, especially people of color and trans, people continue to face discrimination and cruel persistent efforts to undermine their basic human rights, and it is specifically difficult for the LGBTQI plus youth, 45% of whom seriously considered attempting suicide in the last year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Nutley Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, we hereby proclaim and recognize the month of June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex Pride Month, and we urge all residents to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty, and we remind the LGBTQI plus community that they are loved and cherished and seen for who they are, deserving of dignity, respect, and support throughout the township. I would like to just add a few comments for myself. This resolution is important to me. I balance this against my upbringing and my religion, but I value the fact that the importance and the sanctity of a human life is something that can never, ever be diminished. And therefore, I gladly read the proclamation. I will also add that my nephew Finn has just been accepted at Tufts and is starting his new gender, and we as a family, both the immediate family and extended family, are extremely proud of him and fully support him. Commissioners, any additional comments?
I'm good.
Okay, so, thank you. Angelica, would you like to say a few words?
Um. All right, here we go. Hello, my name is Angelica D'Lo, I am lucky enough to be our holding position. I will do position of executive director of Pride. I would like to pay the time to thank the commissioners who are here today. This ownership and pride of Pride, we give you the opportunity to continue to positively impact the very first Pride, and incredibly clear community of Nutley. Nutley Pride was established in 2019 with the goal of creating awareness, providing support and solidarity to the audience who are a part of the community of Nutley. Nutley Pride offers beneficial resources, creates activities, and provides events that promote inclusivity and equality within your community of Nutley. Being able to create a safe space where the community and our allies can come together to celebrate has been incredible, thrilling, and deep. I have been a resident of Nutley for 25 years, from the unforgettable strawberry restaurants at St. Garden School, the buzzing poll meetings, and the supportive school jitters at Dr. Walker Middle School. I am also a accomplished Nutley Raider, many local parks, softball athletes, and county championship. I consider myself a resident of the town. Amongst all those things, I'm also a lesbian. I'm an out and proud member of a society who was simply born this way. I'm the person who holds the door for you at Pete's Deli. I'm the neighbor who smiles at you politely while walking through Yennebourn Park. I'm just like every other resident.
It's not recording, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Do I have to do?
I thought.
That's right.
Should I?
Should I to my own horn? I'll start then.
Yes.
That's what, things happen. I'm the person who holds the door for you at Pete's Deli. I am the neighbor who smiles at you politely while walking through Yennebourn Park. I am just like every other resident in the town of Nutley. Yet, I have to stand up here and preach to you about how there is absolutely nothing wrong with loving who I want to love. Again, I'll repeat this in case it falls upon deaf ears. There is absolutely nothing wrong with being exactly who I am. In fact, I'm here to celebrate it outwardly, loudly, proudly, wholeheartedly, and with pride. I'm using my voice to speak wholeheartedly to the LGBTQIA community of Nutley. As much progress as the LGBTQIA community has made towards acceptance, there remains a significant amount of work to be done to advance LGBTQIA equality and safety for our community. According to the Human Rights Campaign, 130 bills target trans rights have been filed, and 325 anti-LGBTQ+ bills have been proposed in 2024. It seems recently that history is taking place in reverse, which is not only frightening but incredibly upsetting. We cannot turn an eye to the recent increase in violence against the queer community in queer places, which is why what we are doing at Nutley Pride is so important. We must remember that pride isn't just about waving a rainbow flag, it is important to remember that Pride Month is a time of resistance. Pride marks our community's history of fighting back against oppression. The uprising at the Stonewall Inn sparked a liberation movement. Pride was a riot, a call to action that continues to inspire and promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. I'd like to leave you with a few words. These few words are a quote that younger me, who had so much, so many questions about life when coming out, clinged on to. Be who you are and say what you feel, because those who mind don't matter, and those who matter don't mind. Thank you for your time. Thank you for celebrating. You are a preacher.
I hope so.
You got it. What's my name? Good. Paul's gonna come. Go, yeah, go. Cause you're not.
Sorry.
Yes. Or maybe you need to get in first.
Very good. One, two, three.
Yeah, we keep. Reginald wants to get in here too. He's from Essex County.
About that, guys. Hey.
All right. Wait for Bruno. Getting in there, John? Great.
That was said. Want to do a couple of deep little bands, or ready to go?
Yeah.
Tell them what? I just go down, I don't go up.
That's been my problem lately, too.
Excuse me, gang, we need to continue with the meeting. See, now that you sat back down, you have to stay for the whole meeting. Commissioner Petracca, you have a proclamation?
Yes, this is for gun violence in America. The proclamation declares the first Friday of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, in the Township of Nutley, and to honor and remember all the victims and survivors of gun violence, and to clear that we are a country, our country must do more to end the public health crisis. Whereas every day, 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, and with the average of nearly 18 guns homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Whereas New Jersey has 427 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 4.8 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $5.3 million each year, of which 168 million is paid by taxpayers. The state of Mississippi is the highest of gun deaths in the U.S. Whereas gun homicide and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearms-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities, and whereas the cities across the nation, including in the Township of Nutley, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety and the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibilities. And whereas the support of the Second Amendment, rights of the law-abiding citizens go hand in hand with keeping gunware away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas the gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see the increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings, of course, the country increased calls to domestic violence outlines and increased in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 7, 2024, recognized his 27th birthday, Pendleton, born June 2, 1997. People across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute. Haiti, Pendleton, and other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims are, whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Haiti's families who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. Whereas anyone can join the campaign pledging to wear orange on June 7, the first Friday in June 2024, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing, whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them, and encourage responsible ownership to help keep our families and communities safe, now therefore be resolved by Mayor Kelly and the Board of Commissioners. The Township of Nutley County versus State of New Jersey declares the first Friday in June, June 7, 2024, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts and prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Thank you.
Was there anyone here tonight who would like to make a comment? Okay, let's move on with two reports. I have a code enforcement report for the month of April 2024. Madam Clerk, bills?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Bill list for June 6, 2024. Public Affairs, $84,207.80. Revenue and Finance, $2,769,714.49. Public Safety, $61,228.69. Public Works, $71,737.90. Parks and Public Property, $1,032,711.58. Water Utility, $99,880.54. Payroll as of May 24, 2024. Regular payroll total, $982,491.76. Overtime payroll total, $74,189.79. Total payroll, $1,056,681.55, for a grand total of $5,176,162.55.
Move the bills, second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Thank you, sir. Hi. Hi. Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you for the coaching. Thank you for the coaching. You're both experienced.
Well, a little bit, for a short time.
Yeah. Public comments on agenda items only? Would anyone like to come forward? Saying no one, Commissioner, Board of Commissioner announcements? Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Petracca?
Um, I'd just like to comment on that gun violence that I just read. Most, but was not in that proclamation, and obviously, I didn't write it in the letters were very, very small, maybe we can make them bigger all next time so I could see it. But however, saying that, another big issue is that people that own guns, and I am a Second Amendment kind of a guy, and I do have firearms at my home, obviously, they're legal, but the most important message I could send to anybody owning a gun is make sure you secure your gun, because we should read another proclamation about how many kids shoot themselves when they get daddy's or mommy's gun in this country. The numbers are staggering. So if you own a gun, be responsible, make sure you keep it out of the reach of children, because it's horrific to lose a child that way. Also, I'd just like to say this, I really don't want to say this, but I just find it in my heart to say it, because I don't want to jinx us. These car burglaries have been, and house burglaries have been way down, they're like rashes, they eat up, and they come and go. This is as quiet as I've seen it, and I just want to thank everybody for joining Neighborhood Watch, because that has really helped the police department out. Our cops, we have here tonight, I'm an officer, they do an excellent job of being proactive, and they really stopped a lot of this nonsense that was going on in this town by being proactive. So I thank the Nutley Police Department as well, but I want to also thank the residents for, if you see something, say something. I think the message has finally gotten across to lock your doors as well. So, you know, by partnering up with the residents through Neighborhood Watch, or message boards, or whatever we're doing, I just want to thank the Nutley residents, because it seems to be working. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Evans.
Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Counsel, I have three, which I kind of would like to do them all together, would that be okay? Yes, I would. I'd like to make a motion to.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. Tonight, there are three bond ordinances that are on the agenda for this evening, 3554, 3555, and 3556. Two of these ordinances are consistent with our annual capital improvement program, which we stay at a consistent level at to maintain our debt service and making sure that it does not become overbearing on our operating budget. The, one of these, 3554, is utilization of ARP money, which is federal money that was given to townships under the American Rescue Plan Act in 2021, that has to be utilized by the end of the year, and that amount is $2,602,479.68. That, while that is a capital ordinance, it does not increase the debt of the town because it's fully paid for, fully funded. So with that, I would like to move all three of these ordinances to a second reading and advertise, and let them be advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on July 2, 2024, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy, Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. We have one ordinance on the agenda tonight for a public hearing, which was introduced by Commissioner Tucci and myself, providing for the purchase of equipment and infrastructure improvements for the township in the amount of $400,000. This is a, once again, this is a fully funded ordinance, it does not increase the debt of our community. Would anyone like to comment on this ordinance tonight?
Move, we close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. Thank you.
Gonna move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. The, we have some resolutions tonight, 18 in total. I'll read mine last, because I will also read Mayor Kelly's. So Commissioner Tucci, would you like to read your resolution this evening?
Yes, Mayor, give me one minute.
Important to be prepared.
Try and do better next time. Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, family had to cancel participation in programs offered, and whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined a need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, and State of New Jersey, that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. The folks at 226 Union Avenue for Adaptive Baseball in the amount of $60 for year 2024, and the folks at 11 Sunset Drive for travel basketball in the amount of $50 for 2024, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Petracca.
Yes, whereas there are 820 vehicles fatalities in New Jersey in 2023, and whereas a large percentage of the motor vehicles occupants killed in traffic crashes were not wearing seat belts, and whereas the use of seat belts remained the most effective way to avoid death or serious injury in a motor vehicle crash, and then whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimates that 135,000 lives will be saved by safety belts used nationally between 1975 and the year 2000. And whereas the state of New Jersey will participate in nationwide click it or tick it seatbelt mobilization from May 20, June, to June 2, 2024, in an effort to raise awareness and increase seatbelt usage through the combination of high visibility enforcement and public education, whereas the Division of Highway Traffic Safety has set a good goal of increasing the seatbelt rate, usage rate in the state from the current level of 94% to 95.5%, whereas the future increase in seatbelt usage in New Jersey will save lives in our roadways, now therefore be resolved by Township of Nutley declares to support the click it or tick it seatbelt mobilization both locally and nationally from May 20 to June 2, 2024, and pledges to increase awareness of the mobilization and benefits of seatbelt use. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
The township, whereas the Township of Nutley, through the Nutley Police Department, has the need to acquire the services of an outside company for administrative management of police. management of police off duty details throughout the township of Nutley, whereas the extra duty solution located at one oh one Merritt Boulevard, Suite twenty one, um, Trumbull, Connecticut, has submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide such services at no cost to the township for one additional year. And whereas all fees are, will be paid directly to extra duty solutions by the third party vendor. Whereas the term of the contract is not to exceed one year from the date of the contract where whereas extra duty solutions one oh one Merritt Boulevard, um, in Connecticut has completed and submitted a business intent entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to political or candidate committee in Township Penelope in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit extra duty solutions partners from making reportable contributions throughout the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township Penelope. County of Essex, State of New Jersey as follows. The contract shall be entered into between the Township Penelope and Extra Duty Solutions for administration and management of police off duty detail fee. We further resolve a copy of this resolution, as well as the contract, shall be placed on file with the Township Clerk and Chief of Police. I move it.
Second. Commissioner Tucci.
Yeah, just one, just one question, Commissioner. They're gonna do this for free?
I, you know what? I have to tell you, I know that we have the extra, like, um, is this part of the, Sam, is this part of the, um, how they schedule the off duty, uh, like the road work and all that stuff? That's what I thought. So I guess they're gonna do, I guess they're a third party because we already have a company doing that. And, um, I guess I'll.
So would they be collecting the administrative fee instead of?
I don't think that, it sounds, it sounds like to me that they're not collecting any fee for this year for the township, but I guess moving forward. So when there's a cost associated, but I will look into it, into it tomorrow morning.
It's no fee. Well done. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
What time tomorrow will you check it?
Um, I get up about eleven on Fridays.
Aye.
Thank you. Whereas CEO bids for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment were publicly open and read on April tenth, two thousand and twenty four, and whereas turnout uniforms is the better, better bidder. Wow, it's the better bidder based on their prices. And whereas the funds in the amount of forty eight thousand dollars are available in appropriation Title four dash zero one three ten two oh seven police and dispatcher maintenance and allowance. And the funds in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred are available in appropriation Title four zero one three ten two zero seven caution guard allowances. And has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer and said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that the contract for furnishing and delivering police dispatchers and crossing guard uniforms and equipment consistent with the two thousand and twenty four clothing voucher allocation be and hereby awarded to turnout uniforms, one ninety five Patterson Avenue, Little Falls, New Jersey. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Where is the? Okay, this one we're pulling, right? This is, um, the resolution with S Leo. It's, um, one fifty eight dash twenty four with, um, well, Good Shepherd, we're gonna hold, we're gonna table that tonight. Is this the recent it or?
Yes, one fifty eight is.
All right, well, we'll, let's just table it. Okay, that's tabled. Okay, my next resolution, one fifty nine, twenty four, whereas the Nutley Board of Education, that's the same one. That's the one that's tabled. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor Evans.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving right along. Uh, I have several resolutions tonight and I will also read the resolutions, uh, provided by Mayor Kelly in his absence. Uh, my first resolution is resolution authorizing the cancellation of American Rescue Plan grant funds for an over appropriation in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Am I, am I okay to vote it without him here since this is one of the three of us?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Okay. Uh, my next resolution is the, uh, for the township, uh, Revenue and Finance Department, uh, we annually, uh, secure, uh, a, uh, a service with IROC Industries that do electronic tax sales. Uh, it's at the same rate and monies are available in account four oh one, two oh six, two oh nine, which have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. I move this resolution. Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas the township has a need to acquire a specialized professional service for purpose of assisting the township in correcting health insurance being withheld as opposed to tax withholding. And Nizavatchia Certified Public Accounts and Consultants at two hundred Valley Road, three hundred, Suite three hundred Mount Arlington, New Jersey, has the requisite specialized knowledge and experience to provide this service and has submitted a proposal for such services to be billed at their standard rates. Uh, whereas, you know, Nizavatchia has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certifications, uh, which would prohibit them, uh, from making any disqualifying reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley. Then according to local public contract law, the board hereby authorizes and approves a contract with Nizavatchia LLP, uh, to assist the township in correcting prior health, uh, insurance withholdings as opposed to tax withholding at their standard rates. Be further resolved that the Chief Financial Officer has executed a certification of funds uh, in account four oh one, uh, two oh eight, two oh five, uh, for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Be further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and seal, uh, said contract for a professional service on behalf of the township.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Thank you, uh. May, uh, Counsel, since I'm reading this tonight and I'm in this seat, would we modify this that Deputy Mayor consigned versus the mayor? Aye, as amended. My next resolution relates to a vehicle, motor vehicle accident, uh, that happened on, uh, two forty eight Center Street um, in January, uh, twenty twenty four. The, uh, the name, the tenant, Sandra Salon, uh, uh, the window was destroyed. There was an emergent need for an emergency repair. Uh, the township coordinated with the tenant to retain temporary glass services to repair the damaged window. Uh, the fees incurred, uh, for this service was six thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, which the township, uh, desires to pay. Uh, there are claims, uh, that, uh, can be subjugated to the township, which, uh, Contemporary Glass has, uh, has been willing to do and has done so, uh, which enables this resolution to be read. Funds are available in account four oh one, oh two, uh, two oh five. Now they're therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley. State of New Jersey is hereby authorized the Finance Department to issue payment to Contemporary Glass. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Just a question before I vote. So we're going to be reimbursed in total for this?
The, we will have to pursue, uh, action in order to get reimbursed.
Why are we pursuing action? Why, are we placing the lien or?
It would. If necessary, yes. Right. And my hope is it doesn't come to. But we, we, we will pursue action, but either way, my expectation is we will get our money.
Okay. Once we get our money back, I vote aye.
Okay.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, my next resolution is, uh, relates to a, uh, tax exemption under, uh, New Jersey State Tax Statute fifty four, colon, Ford, three, the thirty for the surviving widow of a war veteran who qualified for one hundred percent total and permanent disability in connection with their wartime service, uh, which, uh, they have satisfied all of the filing requirements, uh, to do so. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. The Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Gale Lyons is, uh, be granted full exemption from payment of property taxes from May thirteenth to twenty twenty four and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as block three six hundred, lot nineteen, known as two ninety six Walnut Street. Be further resolved that the treasurer is authorized to refund one thousand, six hundred and ninety nine dollars and eighty six cents for twenty twenty four property taxes. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, the following resolutions of, of the reading on behalf of, uh, Mayor Kelly. Uh, my first resolution, forty, one forty four, twenty four, is an application, has been filed by Jay Izzy, uh, ten eighty one LLC for a person to person transfer of an inactive pocket license to Diamond, uh, Spring Cafe LLC. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. Does hereby approve effective June sixth, twenty twenty four, the transfer of the after said preliminary retail license to Jay Izzy, uh, ten eighty one LLC. And does hereby direct municipal clerk to endorse the licenser certificate to the new, uh, uh, ownership. As follows, this license, subject to all of its terms and conditions, is hereby transferred. So move.
Second. Sorry.
Commissioner Tucci.
Stay.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, my next resolution for, we deals with, uh, Raffle, Raffle applications for Holy Family Church and the Nutley Clifton Hockey Club for, uh, off premise licenses and carnival games and, and Money Wheel, uh, licenses, uh, as, uh, listed in the resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved. And the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, Resolution number fifty, one fifty two, twenty four, uh, is, uh, uh, whereas June eighteenth is Autistic Pride Day, day dedicated to increasing awareness and understanding and acceptance of the autism spectrum disorder. Uh, the, it is important to recognize and support individuals with autism by fostering a learning environment in a community that embraces neurodiversity and promotes inclusive inclusivity. Uh, now, whereas the autism spectrum disorders are characterized by a range of challenges and strengths impacting social communication behavior and sensory, uh, experiences. Uh, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley. Uh, State of New Jersey asks the community to join them in recognizing and celebrating Autistic Pride Day. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, whereas, uh, people of Caribbean heritage are found in every State of the Union. Uh, immigration from the Caribbean to the American colonies began in the early, as early as sixteen nineteen with the arrival of, uh, indentured workers in Jamestown, Virginia. A significant number of slaves from the Caribbean were brought to the United States. Whereas millions of people have, uh, immigrated from the Caribbean to the United States, whereas the Caribbean American have diverse, uh, racial, ethnic, cultural and religious backgrounds. Whereas Caribbean American, uh, Americans have played an active role in the civil rights movement and other social and political, uh, uh, movements of the United States. Uh, now therefore be resolved that the Nutley Board of Commissioners, uh, County of Essex, asks the community to join them in recognizing the, uh, in celebrating June as Caribbean American Heritage Month for all the reasons listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas pursuant to NJSA forty, colon, fifty five D dash eighty nine, the Planning Board of the Township of Nutley uh, is required to prepare and adopt a master plan to guide the use of lands within the township and to periodically reexamine same. Whereas the Board in consultation with Paul Ricky, of Ricky Planning prepared a master plan reexamination report dated uh, December second, twenty twenty two, and the Board held a public hearing on December fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Uh, whereas by resolution dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty two, the Board approved the master plan reexamination report and recommended that the township through the Board of Commissioners endorse the same. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey hereby endorses the master plan reexamination report compared by Paul Ricky, uh, dated December second, twenty two, twenty twenty two, for the Township of Nutley as adopted by the Planning Board. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, whereas the Fourth of July, also known as Independence Day, is a national holiday celebrated annually commemorating the adoption of the Declaration of Independence. Township of Nutley in observance of Independence Day will be hosting, uh, Fourth of July festivities and a firework display on or about Thursday, July fourth, twenty twenty four. Whereas Garden State Fireworks, uh, P O Box four oh three Carlton Road, Millington, New Jersey, is the vendor performing the fireworks activities for the township. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township, uh, Nutley, uh, that the township authorizes the discharge and use of fireworks by its vendor on or about July fourth, twenty four, twenty twenty four, uh, with a rain date, uh, for the next clear night. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Uh, that concludes the formal business of the, uh, Board this evening. Would anyone, uh, wish to make a public comment?
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Steve Gilberti. Basically, no.
Steve, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear you. Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Steve Gilberti. Um, I have a question. Um, I was wondering if there's been any progress in setting up a joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, uh, as well as involving the parents in that as well?
Uh, I know that the representatives of the Board of Education, uh, met with Mayor Kelly, uh, to discuss that topic. Uh, I, I don't know what the conclusion of that was, but there is, there is a meeting planning underway.
Okay. Um, and I had a, one more question. It was, uh, involving the roads, actually. Actually, I got two questions, sorry. Uh, one's involving the roads. So, um, have we looked into maybe doing what Rutherford did and telling public service no more ripping the streets until they repair the ones that they've already ripped? Because I mean, the roads are, the roads are atrocious.
Uh, Commissioner Scarpelli is not here tonight. Uh, he would have more to say on that. We do have, uh, ordinances that restrict, right, uh, opening up a newly paved road uh, for a five year period.
Cause Rutherford just like shut them down completely until they start repairing the roads back.
Yeah, it's, it's. Honestly, it, it, when you have a water system and a sewer system that's over a hundred years old, you know, you, you find yourself, you know, having to do repairs. Uh, so we try to minimize that. And if it's within that five year period, the actual cost to do it is on the, on the applicant, uh, to reimburse the township for that effort.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, my last thing was involving actually an employee for Spring Garden School, right? So he was given a vehicle by the Board of Education that doesn't have seat belts in it. We just went over seat belts, right? Yeah, like a few minutes back. That's what kicked my memory of it. Um, I had posted about it a few days back on Facebook. I know nobody, uh, really watches that too much, but, um, that the driver of the vehicle delivers to the school, right? He's spoken to numerous people, numerous parents. He's complained that the brakes in the vehicle are bad and there's zero working seat belts in the vehicle. Is that something?
Uh, that, that's something that I could look into. And after the meeting, if you want to give me some more information about that, I, I would be glad to. It's, is it a board of ed vehicle?
It is.
Okay.
He, he actually delivers, I believe, the lunches for the Board of Education to Spring Garden every day. He makes the deliveries. It's his vehicle. It, so apparently his vehicle broke down. The board said that they didn't have the money to fix it. They gave him another vehicle, vehicle that they gave him. He says that the brakes are hardly working and there's no working seat belts in the vehicle.
So I could look into that. And if it's okay, um, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to comment on that board of ed stuff. And I, I know that, um, we've all been taken apart and, and working to, not to be part of the problem so much, but be, to be part of the solution. I myself have met with, um, Campania, the superintendent. the superintendent, a couple times and had some conversations. And um, today I met with the state monitor for almost two hours. And I have to tell you, I, I was um, impressed with her. And I think that it's a good thing that she's here. Um, and we're, I'm gonna continue to, you know, put my finger on that because I don't know if any of the other commissioners here tonight saw that um, on Channel eleven news today. It really, it really gives our town a black eye, you know, but until we get all the facts of everything that went on, Steve, you know, I, I think it's only fair for them to gather the information, you know, and see what the solutions are gonna be. And, you know, not that we care about any other towns, and I, I'm a big advocate of saying this, you know, you have to hold people accountable for whatever went wrong because a breakdown like that should have never happened. But I think that um, after meeting with the state monitor today, that, you know, it's not just a, a unique problem in Nutley. All of a sudden, I, I, I believe I'm not a hundred percent fact yet, but Thomas Riversen has a, a lot of um, debt as well. And, you know, after, am I over my time, man, Kirk? Okay, but.
About eight years now.
It's about, I'm here sixteen. Uh, anyway, looking in around the side, it's, it's, it's not a good look for Nutley. You know, we, we don't want to accuse anybody and we don't want to point fingers, but I, I want to tell you that how the schools go is how our township's gonna go. And I'm a advocate of that. And I also have a tenth grader in Nutley school system. So I'm, I'm very much on it. During this campaign season, you know, I, we all were all over the schools, you know, and I asked um, the superintendent about this too. Um, and I just want to be crystal clear. I'm not taking sides just yet. Okay. But when I walked into Washington School and some of these auditoriums were broken chairs and plaster and all that, and you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it like this, because again, I'm not gonna take a side yet. We're better than that. Nutley is better than that. And we have to, you know, we could all throw the daggers, but at some point, it's we, right? We have to all get together with a solution because, you know, again, Nutley's a great town. It's a great place to raise a family. If we lose this school system, it'll, it'll, I really believe it's gonna be the end. Who, who's gonna want to pay these kind of taxes and live in Nutley? So I want you to know that, you know, my fellow commissioners, I won't speak for them, but I am very active in looking into the, any of the information that's available out there as well.
We appreciate all the help, man. Thank you, guys.
Steve, before you go, uh, since Commissioner Petrako made comments this eve, this evening, uh, which I didn't expect, uh, the, I think it's important that you understand is that the full board is seriously looking at this and is investigating it. I have met with the, the state monitor uh, for uh, almost three hours uh, on Wednesday. I know Commissioner uh, Tucci, you're scheduled to meet with her.
Next week.
Early next week. Uh, and all of the commissioners will be meeting with her. I have been involved very heavily uh, with the matter from the financial side uh, actually uh, since for a few months. Uh, and I'm, uh, I, I have a lot of information. Uh, what I will tell you, what's important right now is to make sure that the school system is able to complete their school year, uh, receive the necessary funding from the state in order to be able to pay their bills, uh, which they plan on paying. Uh, and I'm, I've been informed that the state did approve uh, their, not only a loan, but actually working capital to make sure uh, they can continue to function uh, with their, uh, in, in a reasonable way. There are things that, you know, that you can identify and point to that created a budgetary problem. Uh, there were uh, new revenues that were listed, uh, that didn't have any history associated with them that would became unrealizable. Why the, the business administrator put those in there? And why the county, the state representative approved that, right? That's one to be investigated further. Not so much that anybody did wrong. You just have to find out what the real answer is. But the next thing that's important is that the school system has to be able to function for the next school year. So there was quite a bit of work done to get a budget together uh, quickly uh, in order to meet the filing deadlines. And the uh, there's a lot of work being done to make sure that every account, every line item is fully funded in the way, in the way it should be, and that it is being monitored. There's uh, active interviewing going on to hire a new BA, uh, which will have uh, have, have, and unfortunately, I have interviewed some of the candidates that are well qualified to now sit in that seat. So there are some very good things that are going on. So I would tell you that the answer to getting those solid answers to how it happened, uh, I can share with you an opinion, right? But uh, that getting to the exact details of that uh, will take some time. It's, it's a priority, but in terms of the first priorities, first priority is make sure we get through the year. Make sure all the bills are paid, right? Second is make sure the, the, the budget is right for next year. And I know they introduced a budget with a roughly three hundred and thirty dollar increase that they're estimating. Uh, it's actually gonna be lower than that because the way the budget is put together year over year, you get half the last year's with half of this year's. So last year was lower, this year's higher, so it averages down. Uh, so uh, it, it'd probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred dollars less than what they were uh, estimating. So there's a lot of good things that that are going on. Um, I have met with the superintendent, the uh, chair of the finance committee, there's the board president at length uh, to go over all of those, the, these matters, uh, and will continue to do that. But I think it's important for you to understand is that I'm looking at it, and I've been, been looking at it one way. This full board is, is very concerned that the school needs to continue to operate. And I'm gonna say this because it's not just about one class of students. It's about, in fact, that there's over four thousand students in the system and they all need a great education. And they're, all of their needs need to be met. And so we as a board are make, are concerned uh, that we uh, make certain that the school has the ability uh, to administer the and execute the education of our children the way they need to. Please keep in mind though, under statute and under law, this board is wholly separate. So from the Board of Education. So while we can ask and while we can inquire, we cannot uh, control it. And we do not control. And I might be responsible for collecting all the money to go pay it, but I have no influence uh, over what.
No, I agree.
Neither, neither does the board. I think it's just, just to keep it in context.
And I think that's kind of like some of the unease on the parent's side, right? It's because like um, the same board who hired the last business administrator with a known track record of this problem is now gonna hire the next business administrator. Nothing's really changing. Same group of guys, they've been.
Keep that, keep in mind, it's not, it's not, it is different. It is different because the people that are looking at doing the interviewing didn't interview the last one. And the state monitor uh, is the deciding factor on who gets into that seat.
But all the board members do vote for the appointing of.
Yes, and so. And the state monitor has a full authority.
No, I'm saying the business administrator, the last business administrator, uh, David, uh, he was certainly signed off on by all these board members, right? I mean, all of them would have signed off on him at some.
Would be a vote of the board. Who was involved with it? Well, it's.
They were all on the board when he was hired. He was only hired like three years ago. They're all long seated members short of Nick, right?
But I appreciate, you know, that's history, you know, but today, the approval.
I was just trying to say, like, you know, they hired the last one, they're gonna hire this one. So it's kind of like that. I think that's a part of the concern for the.
And Steve, my point is, it's not the same because with the state monitor present, right? And I was part of the interviews, so it's not the same. But even the board, and the board itself, whatever their feelings are, the state monitor has a complete override.
Awesome.
So.
That's good to know.
Some of that history, yes, but it's not, it's definitely not the same.
Cool. Appreciate that.
Tom has really done a lot of work and I, I gave him kudos today. And he is the man for the job when it comes to the budget. And I'm glad that this came up tonight because I am, I, the one thing I'm not too happy about, and I expressed that, and I don't know why the reasoning for this is, is when we took over the ambulance squad in Nutley and my name got dragged in the mud, through the mud, you might know, and um, Mora was the mayor at the time, and he was a great hand and helping me. We gave a timeframe out of when our investigation was gonna be over, when, you know, we would have it resolved by, and we released the information, you know, and I asked the state monitor today because I have been watching these board of ed meetings, and I'll talk as a commissioner tonight and a parent. Okay. And, you know, I would, I would just want it to be that it's such transparent parent as it could be when they are legally allowed to release this information. But I have to tell you, Steve, I'm, and the reason why I did open my mouth and I will continue to is because, you know, all of us have been accused of sitting on our hands and not getting involved and all that stuff. But the truth of the matter is, and I'll speak for myself because I don't want to tarnish anybody else but myself, is that none, none of us are sitting on our hands and none of us are happy about this situation. It's just like Commissioner Evans said before, it is sep, two separate boards, they're elected, but if you, and I'll speak for myself, if you think I'm happy about this situation, you don't know me at all. So I'm not happy about it. And but, but again, the message that I will send out, and I don't point fingers until I have factual information, is that Nutley has to get together now because we are at the crossroads, and it's time to get together and be part of the solution, not just going up to microphones and yelling at people and things like that. So that's all I have to say, Deputy Mayor Evans. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else, Steve?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Well, would anybody else like to comment?
Sorry.
Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing, public comment period?
Yes.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako. Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Time is now eight oh three.